We're going to move to public comment. Just as a final reminder, for those who are speaking, there is a Google form signup link in the chat for anyone who is on Zoom. The timeframe is three minutes. We are going to have to stick to that as closely as we can. We have probably around 20 plus people who signed up for public comment in chambers, and I think we also have some who signed up virtually. Everyone will get an opportunity to speak. Once you come forward, please introduce yourself to your right lower hand corner. You will see a clock that's going to give you your time. I will give you a final reminder. We have about 30 seconds left. First, we have Abdul Hameen L. Abdul Hameen L. Next, we have, I believe it's Dana Flugere. P F L U G R E A. First name begins with a D. Next, we have Rochelle Wilson. Rochelle Wilson. I apologize. You can come up this way. And please watch your step, Rochelle. Please watch your step as you come to the podium.
Okay. First and foremost, I'd like to say peace and grace greetings to all of my city council representatives. Many of you have graced me with the pleasure to get to know you. Some of you, that pleasure still awaits. However, I must say, when a city employee lives in the community that they serve, they are more likely to be invested in the community's welfare and outcomes. This community, this matters not just for our police officers, 911 callers, city lawyers, sanitation workers, city planners, and the list just goes on. There are economic benefits for the city as workers would continue more to local businesses, would contribute more to local businesses and local taxes. According to the Department of Labor Local Area Unemployment Statistics, in August of 2023, there were more than 2,600 unemployed persons in the city of Wilmington. But the city of Wilmington is looking to fill 92 positions. To me, in my wisdom, it's very simple. It's not complicated. It's very simple. Allow people to be trained to do the jobs that you want them to do. Rather than remove the residency because people who live here care about us here. The police know us here, the city planners, city council, all of these people. So it's very simple to me. And, you know, I'm not big on politics, but I've got good common sense. I've got good common sense. Just train the people to work here. I'm gonna tell you now, I'd love to work for the city of Wilmington. Give me a job. Train me how to do it. I'm awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have, again, we're going to ask everyone to please refrain. Everyone will have an opportunity to come forward and speak. Next, we have Kevin Malloy. Kevin Malloy.
Good evening, everyone. Counsel. Nice microphones now. I think Wilmington is a small town. I know it's actually a city, but really it's a small town. It's about the residents. Of course, it's about the history. But it's about the people that live and work and play here. The city, I'm just going to make some points so I can stay within the three minutes. But I am a very passionate person about the city of Wilmington. I was born and raised here. I work here. I promote the city through my activism and as a realtor. But anyway, some of the points I think that are important and probably others will mention. So hopefully, I'll try to put some original ones out there. One, I think the city Wilmington employees, they work for the city and they're paid by the taxpayers. Non-resident city employees cannot vote. Don't you think voting matters? Don't you think the employees of the city should be able to vote? Therefore, as residents, they could. Commuters lose touch with resident issues. Commuters get in automobiles and they drive out and they have a remote control in their garage and they leave the city. People that live here in the city, they walk on the streets. We see the lights that are broken or we see the good things, people sitting on the front porches. You feel the energy of the city when you live in the city. If you get in the car, you leave, live outside the city, you lose touch. And you really, if you're an employee, do you think of yourself, it's whether you think of yourselves as a meter maid? You just come into work and you're, you know, you're metering things. You know, you're going after those residents for things that they've done wrong. Get them fines, do the gotcha attitude. Or are you an ambassador? Are you an ambassador? That's how we should be. The employees of the city Wilmington should be ambassadors. We represent the city and we are wanting people to live here, move here. How I'm going to change this to go into a corporation? Because if you think an employee is just somebody that goes to work and leaves, yeah, then that's like working for a corporation. Well, guess what? There was a day when a corporation was here that believed in the community and gave incentives for their people. It was MBNA. That was an amazing company in Wilmington, Delaware. They were part of the renaissance of the quality of living. They encouraged their people. They didn't call them employees. They called them people. And the people lived within the community and they gave them incentives to move here. And they, they lived here and Charles Colley, the founder of MBNA, was a huge philanthropist that helped develop the city of Wilmington to what it is now. There's also, there should be incentives for the employees to move here. And there should be a hardship clause if you can't live here. If you say, like, I want to work for the city Wilmington, but I've got three kids and they're over here and we live in Colorado, whatever it is that people are saying that to give up residency. There's a lot of excuses, but you give them, okay, let's have a hardship clause. Explain why you can't move to the city of Wilmington. That, that when you get rid of the residency, you're diluting the community and it's the, to me, the end of the sustainability of our city government. And we might, what will happen next? We might as well get rid of the borders and let's merge with the new Calico County government if it's just the people want to work for a company. It's all about the community. It's about the community spirit. I strongly hope that the council people sitting here that are going to vote for non-residency at least listen to the public, the many people here that have a spirited commitment to our city and listen to us, the public who vote for you.
Thank you. Next, we have, I'm going to ask you, please, everyone, please, please refrain from shouting out. We do understand that everyone is extremely passionate. If you have signed up for public comment, you will have an opportunity to come forward and speak. Thank you. Audrey McCarthy. Please watch your step as you come forward, Ms. McCarthy.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And again, my name is Audrey McCarthy. And I'm here because I am in, I am in favor of keeping the residency program in the city of Wilmington. And I want to say to the city council members who I see on this list that is voting to move it, get rid of it. I want to remind you that it is the residents of Wilmington that put you in your seats. We have the power to put you there and we have the power to remove you. And that is what we will do if you remove the program. If you vote to remove the program, you can consider your seats vacant. Next, I want to say it is impossible to comprehend that you cannot find anyone to fill 92 positions in the city. Number one, I live in the city and I do not know of one position, I think only 15 positions, that I am aware of. So that mean many do not know about the positions that are available. That's one thing. And it's approximately 70,000 people or more that are living in the city of Wilmington. And I believe it's very degrading to say that you cannot find applicants to fill a trash collection position. I think it's very insulting to our residents in the city. Next to say to you, in my opinion, the primary, one of the primary reasons for violence in the city is the lack of financial resource. So these young men, they sell drugs on the street. Is it an excuse? No. But it's a problem and the problem lies with our city government. And so when you eliminate these jobs and go other places and hire people who don't understand the city, police officers who don't know the residents and don't care, then tell me what message are you sending? We need incentives. Let me tell you a personal thing about me. I consider myself to be a very intellectual and educated individual. I'm a vice president with a company I work for. But put the test in front of me and I'll fail it. What I found out in psychology that many people suffer from something called test anxiety. So therefore, when you test people, especially when they're applying for a job and they are anxious to get the job, they will fail that test. So what do I suggest? Instead of eliminating our black men and our black women to see other colors, I am not a racially driven individual, but what is this about to get rid of the residents? Because it's mostly blacks living here, right? And so, train them. If we have positions, how hard is it to train someone to collect trash? How hard it is to train someone to work in parks and wrecks? I applied for a job in the city of Wilmington a couple of years ago. And I was interviewed by a team of white individuals who did, I have a long resume with a background in accounting and finance before I transferred over to law. They directed me down to customer service without any, any explanation as to why I was not qualified for that position. So what I'm saying here, there are too many reasons behind wanting to get rid of this program. Please, men, gentlemen, keep the residency program for the city of Wilmington. And if you, if you decide to go outside, please make it a requirement. I don't, I'm not against that because you need qualified candidates, right? But make it a requirement that they must move in the city within six months to a year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Susan Regis Collins. And please watch your step when you come to the podium, Ms. Collins.
Good evening. Nice to see everybody turning up. I'd like to have, make a little disclaimer here before I start. Please excuse any language you find offensive. Talk in your mic. I'm a, I'm an accolade of Senator John Fetterman, Democrat of Pennsylvania. You know, the big guy with the, with a sweatshirt. He's one of my heroes. Okay. Tonight, we, the people, are in council chambers finding one, fighting one of Prisicki's many parting nose thumbs at city residents. Okay, so if these police officers, like those in the past, who agitated to get rid of residency, want, don't want to live in the city, that's fine. I don't have any problem with somebody saying, I don't want to live in the city. They have plenty of opportunities and options with state, county, river and bay, smaller cities and towns. In fact, the entire tri-state area. There's hundreds of jobs out there. Okay, many in this room have fought this fight before. And we are not interested in an occupation force controlling our city. You may recall, or maybe you don't recall, but your family members recall that after Dr. King's assassination, the National Guard was in here for nine months. Okay, in Philly, DC, Baltimore, they stayed for weeks. Yeah, okay. This is a step the white elites and a, and a cabal of handkerchief heads have worked on for years. In my opinion, this is nothing but a move to metropolitan government.
Yeah, 30 seconds.
This would seriously dilute political power for people of color at a time when many have made it into the middle class. Maybe progress has been slow, but nonetheless steady. So it must be time to pull the rug out to achieve the white man's ultimate goal of denying power at any cost to so-called minorities, when you live in a city where you're not a minority, but you're still referred to one. Okay, this is an old game, leftover from Civil War days. If it looks like people of color are gaining power, it must be stopped at any means possible. It's like, if you don't like it in Wilmington, get the hell out.
Next, our next speaker is Keandra McDowell. Keandra McDowell. And please watch your step as you come forward. If you look to your lower right hand side, you'll see a timeframe.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
My name is Keandra McDowell. I have been very active in the city of Wilmington, through the whole state of Delaware for the past eight years as an activist. And I'm gonna keep it short and simple. I paid attention to this flyer right here when I came in. And it gives names of the individuals who want to lift the residency in the city of Wilmington. I'm just here to say, and a lot of people know what I do. I am one who protested at the mayor's house for 16 days straight. Um, if you vote yes for this, I will work hard to make sure that you do not have your seat next year. And y'all know I'm coming hard. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have DeSheryl Broadwater. DeSheryl Broadwater. Please watch your step as you step to the, to the podium. Your lower right hand side, you will see your, your time clock.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm glad to be here, but I'm sad to be here under these circumstances. You know, the bottom line is what he's saying, what the mayor is saying is, your kids, my son, your son, your grandchild, doesn't matter. That's all it's saying. They're taking, they're using their privilege to push us back. If this passes, this is going to be 50 years of us fighting. I remember what it took for me to be able to stand here and be able to vote. I think it's a disgrace for some of us who sit here in city council, knowing what our parents before us fought for. It's, it's a disgrace. So what I will say is, your decision to support these efforts is a slap in the face to the constituents that voted you in. If the mayor doesn't care for the city of Wilmington, what makes you think he cares about you? Cause he, cause you all, with the exception of you, look just like me. What he's saying is, we don't matter. And we've had enough of this, we don't matter. We voted you in. We used our vote to put you in place to support us. And that's not being done. If you want to know what the city of Wilmington is going to look like in about, I'll say 10 years. Councilwoman McCoy, you're from Chester.
I'm going to ask you, please, please don't.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Your comments to any council members, only to me as the president. Thank you.
Okay. Well, some of us on council, look at Chester. Just take a look at what Chester looks like. That's what it's going to look like. I applied for a 91, I wanted a 911 job. I can be an operator. I do advocacy, crisis intervention. I think I'd be perfect for the job. So if you still have that job open now, what you got, 90 jobs left? Cause Rochelle's already going to take one. If I take one. So I'll end this and I'll be very blunt. What the mayor is doing and what he's saying right now, he's almost pulling his pants down and telling you to kiss his butt. Because that's what he's doing. And if you vote for this, I want the city of Wilmington to remember every face that supports it. Because like the lady said before me, is your seat should be vacant. Thank you.
Is Teresa Oliver still in council chambers? Next, we have Madeline Porter. Please watch your step, Ms. Porter.
Thank you. When a city employee lives in the community they serve, they are more likely to be invested in that community's welfare and outcomes. This matters not just for police officers, but for also the city lawyers, sanitation workers, and city planners. There are also economic benefits for the city as workers would contribute more to local businesses and local taxes. According to the Department of Labor Local Area Unemployment Statistics, in August 2023, there was more than 2,600 unemployed people in Wilmington. That's ridiculous. Yet somehow, the city claims it's unable to fill 92 vacant positions. Explain that. Rather than eliminating the residency requirement, city council and the mayor administration should focus on apprenticeship and training programs to get current city residents into city jobs. The mayor administration has invested six figures of city funds to its time Wilmington campaign to push residency to live, play, and work in Wilmington. We should be encouraging city employees to actually work, play, and live in Wilmington. We understand and agree with the urgency of filling city jobs. Therefore, an alternative to eliminating the residency requirement would be to expand the time an employee has to move to the city. Current law allows six months to move to the city after employee. Amending the law to allow for one year would also provide the opportunity for people to take the time they need to find a new home without lifting the requirement they actually live in the city. We urge all city council members to vote no on the legislation proposed. Wilmington jobs for Wilmingtonans. It's our city. We care because we live here. We reap the benefits and rewards or we'll suffer the consequences. What's the motive for people to do better if better opportunities aren't available? Employ us. Serve us. And if you don't, you'll get served. You'll be unemployed. Residents matter. We matter. Outsiders? No. They don't matter. And if your job matters to you, you'll vote no. Does your job matter? Do we matter to you? I certainly hope so because that's what I would expect of our government. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jaquim Mohammed. And please watch your step as you step to the podium.
All right, peace and blessings to all. This ain't my first rodeo here, so I've been here a long time, many times. Let me just give you all this. Y'all had a lot of emotion already. So I ain't going to bring it to you. The Hard Talk is not on tonight. That's my show. But I'm going to give you this. Wilmington City Council should vote no on lifting the residence requirement. Oh, let me just introduce myself. My name is Jaquim Mohammed. I'm a civic advocate, a host, a veteran, and a retired law enforcement. And behind me was a whole bunch of cops over there making a lot of noise about why we should have residencies. I'm from New York City and you have a residency from New York City. Now, I've been down here for 20 years now. And if you don't like working here, then go get a job someplace else. I really don't care about you. It's that culture that's the reason why we're in this situation. Now, Wilmington City Council should vote no on lifting the city residency requirement for city workers. No local accountability and community investment. This requires, ensures that municipal employees have a stake in the city's well-being and fostering a sense of pride and commitment to the improvement. Lifting the requirement could lead to a loss of connection between the workers and the communities. And based upon what I've heard tonight, y'all have already lost that. There's no connection between them and you. It's you against them. That's the type of culture they got. I know it because I've worked it for 25 years. So let me just give you this. Additionally, it would be an economic repercussions as city employees contribute to the local economy. Maintaining residence requirement not only fosters city engagement, but also promotes economic stability. So I want y'all to remember one of the best movies ever made was called Do the Right Thing. For all you city council persons that's thinking of doing the wrong thing, the black, the Delaware Black Commission will be making sure that you are not in office after this. If you do not know the Delaware Black Commission, I want you to go on Facebook, look on the Hard Talk with Jaquim Mohammed, and look what the nine people that are on that commission that are about a think and do tank. And we will think and do and put you out of office. That's it. Peace and blessings to y'all.
We're going to have, at this time, at this time, we are going to, per council rules, you're going to have to vote to extend public comment past 7:30. It's an obvious that if, if public comment comes up to 7:30, we have to vote for it to continue. So move.
Second.
Second. All in favor for extending public comment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or any council members opposed? Motion, motion pass. Thank you. This time, we're going to have Deion Wilson. Motion, motion pass. Thank you. This time we're going to have Deion Wilson.
Good evening, city council. My name is Deion Wilson. I'm a taxpayer for over 50 years, property taxes. And I can't, I'm over 70, so I've been paying other taxes more than that. But I'm here today to say one thing only. The mayor is no good. Now, listen to me. A lot of things have been said here, but what we have to understand is Wilmington has been under tax since 1968. And and for things to get better, it's got to blow up. So let's blow it up. All right? There's council members in here who are in favor of taking away residency. I just heard I can't call the young man's name, but I was here four years ago, five years ago, when he said there's not a person in the city of Wilmington capable of passing the police test. This individual is one of the individuals that wants to get rid of residency now. He wasn't elected, then he was appointed. There's a bunch of people in here now that were appointed that were not elected. They still feel the same way. I looked up the word the other, about two months ago, I saw it said quality of life. Wilmington, the state of Delaware is number 48. Only people below us was Mississippi and Alaska. So today before I came in here, I looked at quality of life for the city of Wilmington. There are no figures. It's so low, there are no figures. Chester has figures. Philadelphia has figures. Wilmington does not have enough information to even even be qualified under the quality of life standard. We have a mayor that's been building buildings since he got here. He's done nothing for our community. Every time he has a budget, it's about building. We have rabid, criminal, all kinds of stuff going on that's wrong. But if you don't invest in your community and you don't invest in your people, then how can it go right? We don't need occupying force. This is not the Gaza Strip. If the police don't live here with us, they don't need to be in here with us. All right? If the firemen don't live here with us, they don't need to be in here with us. If anybody who's taking taxpayer money don't want to be in the city of Wilmington, get out. Just get out now. Go quick. Any city council member, any city council member, and all city council members who are in favor, just like I told the last city council president that she would not be reelected, and she wasn't. You will not be reelected because we're going to fight hard as hell to get you out of here. We really want to fight. That last time was just a few of us. Now it's a bunch of us. Because everybody can see the light.
Thirty seconds.
All right? If you're blind, open your eyes. If anybody, my aunt, Goldie Wilson, was a cop, first woman cop in history of Wilmington. She lived in the city. Mr. Parnell, the first black man, that was a cop. He was my next door neighbor. They wasn't living in Greenville, Centerville, or anywhere else. They were in the city. Taxpayer dollars need to go to the city. You give people jobs, paying good money, they're going to take tax dollars out of the city? Come on now. He's going to bankrupt the city before he leaves. That's what Prisicki wants to do. He wants to bankrupt the city before he leaves. He's built buildings, he's done nothing for the people.
That's your time, sir.
All right? So what we need to do is people not only get a real mayor elected this time. All right? We get a real mayor, remember quality of life. You don't have a quality life in the city of Wilmington, and we don't want army occupation.
Thank you, please. Again, I'm going to ask you to please try to refrain from from shouting. Please, thank you so much. Next we have, there are two people. I just want to make sure that that signed, but signed up for no public comment. That was Pastor Dale Johnson and Deacon Elwoods. Is that correct? Did you want to have public comment? Pastor Pastor Johnson?
Mr. President, members of council, members of my community, thank you for this opportunity. I'm standing as a homeowner, resident of the city of Wilmington, a local pastor, and a member of a coalition, I would call it, of people citywide who spend every day of our lives attempting to make a difference and a change in the violence that scourges our city and the gun violence with our young people. Spend our lives, many of them are in this room tonight, we spend our lives doing this. And I've come to say to the members of council, both who support a no vote, those who whether out of obligation, intimidation, whatever your motivation for supporting a flawed and backward policy that Mr. Prisicki wants to implement, whatever your motivation, I've come to ask you even to consider reconsidering what you are about to do and why you're about to do it. A a lifting of the residency requirement in this city would definitely adversely affect our efforts to turn around the gun violence in this city. It would adversely affect it. With 70,000 people in this city, it is ludicrous to suggest that what is taking place with violence and gun violence in the city of Wilmington is the result of a lack of adequate numbers within the police department. That is an untruth. Mr. Prisicki knows it. It is rather a result of a failed policing strategy in our communities, a polarizing attitude by our mayor in which he has prevented the police department from working with very various elements in the community and all agencies and citizens who want to help. It is a result of not paying Wilmington police officers equal to the pay of those officers that receive pay in Newark, in the county, or somewhere else. A lack of people interested in being Wilmington cops is a result of it not being attractive to be a Wilmington cop, not a result of us not having enough cops. The reality of it is, this is as has been stated, an attempt on the part of the mayor to implement a strategy that they've been attempting to implement in Wilmington for years. And that is to head us toward metropolitan government. And we ought to send this recommendation by the mayor, to which is contradictory in terms. In the article for his retirement recently, he said, "As a result of the Wilmington policing, under my administration, we've had the lowest crime statistics in the history of the office." What he didn't say is, "We've had the highest murder rate, the highest school violence rate, the highest..." So 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 if in fact, Mr. Mayor, you believe we've had the lowest crime rate in the history of this city under your administration, then why would you be talking about changing the residency requirement? That is the cause of us having that low crime rate. I thank you for this opportunity and say to you, send this recommendation back or send it where Mike Prisicki is going, to private life.
Thank you. Deacon Woods? You okay, sir? Okay, thank you. Donald Farrell. And please watch your step, sir. And please keep time, your timeframe is right in your lower right hand corner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The very last time I was here, the mic was cut off, so hopefully WITN has it together this time. First, I'd like to say that everything that I wanted to say has been said, so I'm going to take a different track right now. We have a manufacturing facility down on Fourth Church called Navamco, and they've been there for like 41 years. And in the last 25, 26 years, there has never been a public hearing. Mr. Demonty Hall was the one that initiated this public hearing. They make oxycodone, they make hydrocodone, they make opioids. They want to increase their manufacturing capacity to make some other compounds too. So coming up next week, there's going to be a meeting. We need folks to pack that meeting because their excuse has been, well, we're not going to have it because nobody ever comes. So hopefully you will come. So now I'm going to backtrack and I'm going to say that we had a 72-year-old man get shot in his home yesterday on the east side. Okay? And I'd like to say that I see all the officers in the back, and I don't know your position on this residency issue, but I'd like to say that we need you in our community, okay? A while ago, we used to give you a house. We used to say, well, listen, come into our community, live in our community. You know, find out, build relationships with the people in the community. That's important, okay? So I'm not for this thing, but what I am for is opportunities for the officers. And every time HR makes a big push to hire more minority officers, it's like they can never find them. Or the one is that they do find, well, they say, well, uh, where are you? They're working inside the station house, booking and receiving. They're doing the office things. We thought that you were going to hire them to put about on the street.
Ten seconds.
Okay. And I'd just like to say, I hope this thing doesn't pass because if it does pass, the sponsoring person that put this thing up hiding behind Zoom, you ought to be here right now to see how folks feel. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we have Valda Jones Potter. Please watch your step.
Good evening, everyone. I am so thankful to see so many people here. Like Donald said, I'm very disappointed that the sponsor of this legislation isn't here in this room to feel the love. I have been in conversation with members of, several members of the city council during this week because this issue has longstanding implications for this city. Its financial health, its economic viability, our sovereignty as a self-governing incorporated entity here in this state. You've heard metropolitan government said more than once today. And this certainly would be a major step in that direction. Who gives up power and self-control? No one does that. If you want to control your destiny, it is absolutely essential that you maintain your sovereignty and your organization and ability to select your own leaders. During my conversations this week, I asked several times, where are these reported in the paper 92 positions? I only see 15 on the website. So for my money, all you're trying to fill is 15 positions. So I'm not going to echo a lot of what was said today. I'm going to bring you a little bit of a solution. It is the mayor and the administration's job to fill the positions of this city. Now here's some tips, if you're watching. Publicize it. I see groundbreaking. I see press releases on $90 million building developments that are going on weekly, sometimes two and three times a week. I have yet to see a press conference saying we need people to work for this city. I asked council members, do you know what positions are open? They don't get reports. This is the first time, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you all, I believe, at least I'm told, have seen the positions that are open. Now, if I'm trying to let people know their jobs, I'm coming to the people's people. I'm coming to the council members to help me spread that word. I'm going to billboards all up and down the city. I'm taking the investment that I made in the HBCU week, and I'm making it more than just a publicity stunt and a marketing ploy. I'm making it a recruitment opportunity. Boasting 6,000 scholarships given to the HBCU students, how many jobs have they gotten to bring them back here in this community? Let me partner them with an enhanced benefit package to bring them here. Let me give them a home outside, out of the land bank. And let me give them a $5,000 sign-on bonus, and then let me put in their hands a letter of offer of job opportunity that they can take to the bank and get a $50,000 loan in a heartbeat, convert that home into a livable place, live there for five years because that's what the law says, and become a solid member of this community, contributing, paying taxes, enjoying life, and living close to many of the relatives that they grew up with. Administration, that's just a little tidbit. I give you that one.
Thank you. Next we have, next we have Cheyenne Miller. Cheyenne Miller. Cheyenne Miller. Thank you for joining us. Please, please watch your step as you get to the podium. Again, your time clock is in your lower right hand corner.
Hello, my name is Cheyenne Miller. I'm a resident of the 7th District, and I just want y'all to vote no on this ordinance to lift the residency requirements. Vote no. It is extremely disappointing that we have seven members of our city council that are actually thinking about lifting residency requirements before they're thinking about launching apprenticeship programs, before they're thinking about training programs, before we're providing people with the opportunity to know that these jobs even exist. It was dirty to send this and the state ordinance around and the state law around to people sitting in the audience. You gave this to them, but you did not give them a chance to give public comment on this legislation when this legislation was put up. You changed this legislation last minute so that people did not have an opportunity to review it so that they could understand what the legislation was saying, so they could understand what the legislation would do. We heard about this legislation after it was changed last minute. So not only are you not giving us an opportunity to speak in public comment in a committee, but you're also taking the opportunity for us to have transparency and to listen to the community. I'm extremely disappointed. I'm extremely disappointed in anyone who is supportive of this. And I'm extremely disappointed that we don't have the sponsor here in person, sitting upstairs in his office instead of being down here to look us in our faces. Councilmember Al Mills is the sponsor of this legislation. It is extremely important that you all vote no. Please vote no on this. This is extremely important that y'all give us opportunity to come up with new ideas, come up with new things that we could do, right? We are willing to work together to find any solution that you want, any solution, to figure out how we can get jobs. You got jobs on here that I ain't never seen on the website. You handing out 90, 92 jobs. This don't even say 90, this say 100 jobs is vacant. And you telling me you can't find somebody that's going to be a youth program manager, a labor foreman, a code enforcement supervisor? You've got senior financial officers on here. You've got people who are supposed to be a signal electrician. You can't find nobody to take these jobs? Vote no. Vote no. It's no reason why we should have seven city council members here that have their name on this legislation that are supportive. It is extremely important. I cannot tell anybody in good conscience to go to the polls and vote you back in if you vote for this. I can't. And I want everybody, everybody to know that it is essential that you show up and speak out on this. I do hope that everyone here will consider changing their vote to no. I do hope that you will all consider working together. And if you do decide that you want to vote vote, vote on an amendment. If you think it's so hard to get people into the city, it's essential that you decide that maybe you extend the amount of time it takes for someone to move here. Give us a six-month extension, right? From six months to a year to allow someone to move here. If it's that difficult to move into this tiny-ass city, then let's let's find some time, right? Give them some time from six months to a year. But if you vote yes on this, your name will be out there and we will tell the world. Thank you very much for giving my time to speak.
Thank you. Next we have Craig Wolfrey. Craig Wolfrey. Is Craig Wolfrey still with us? Can I, can I please, I just wanna make sure that they can hear our name, hear his name called, Craig Wolfrey? Okay, thank you. Uh Wolfrey, I know you signed up, I'm not sure if you want public comment or not, if Wolfrey is still here? All right, next we have R. Ralphston. Gonna ask everyone to please try to keep as close as possible to your three-minute timeframe and uh please remember to uh be careful as you step to the podium, thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone that's present. Give me your undivided attention for a few minutes.
Please try to speak into your mic, sir.
My name's Holland Ralphston Jr. and I would first like to say all the individuals on city council who are in favor of lifting the residency requirement for the city of Wilmington should and must be voted out because they're voting against their own interest. So if you have an individual that are willing to cut off their own head for some spooky reason, they need to be voted out. My, my point is this, and I'm gonna take it to the hiring practice for the city of Wilmington. In my opinion, the hiring department is full of people with implicit biases made up of individuals who have the mentality of an Anglo-Saxon superiority complex. These individuals are part of the good old boy and good old girl system who have been embedded in the city of Wilmington for years upon years, even looking at the police officers in the back and standing around the room. If the city of Wilmington is sixty-five to seventy-five percent African-American or black, why isn't it represented in the police department? If Wilmington is sixty-five to seventy percent black or African-American, then why isn't it evident in the employment of the city of Wilmington? When I go into the city, city building, city county building, Lewis L. Redding building, I would say there's eighty percent of white individuals, twenty percent of black individuals, something like that, and probably fewer blacks than that. Okay, now this good old boy system, this implicit bias is embedded there in the city. So a lot of times when individuals come in for these positions, they might have dreads, they might have plaques, they might have long hair, and these things turn off those individuals who are evaluating them. They find fault and error in those individuals because they don't look like them. The individuals that look like them that would apply for these jobs, they would probably overlook some of those shortcomings because they want to keep in place the institutional racism that's prevalent in the city of Wilmington, Delaware. I've lived here all my life and many times I've felt like a second-class citizen in America and in Wilmington. So again, council people who are willing to cut off your own throat, cut off your own head rather than evaluating the hiring process because I think that's a false positive saying that they can't fill these positions. They can't fill these positions because they're hell-bent on keeping that good old boy system. You have mega-supporters doing this hiring, you have white nationalists doing this hiring, you have avowed racists doing this hiring, and they're enjoying white privilege so they care nothing about you, they care nothing about me. Now what caught my attention tonight is nobody's in favor of uh lifting this residency program. So who do you represent? The constituents or the mayor? The mayor's giving you crumbs in your pocket and in your bank account, that's why you're supporting this bill or this uh effort to to lift the residency program. It's not because of your constituents.
That's your time.
Every constituent in here has been in favor of lifting it. So you tell me, who are you representing and why? Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Lourdes Rivera. Please watch your step as you come to the podium, Ms. Rivera.
I'm so happy to be here tonight, representing my Hispanic community. My name is Lourdes Rivera, I live on the fifth district for the last thirty-three year. By the way, where's my city council? I'm here against ordinance twenty-two zero three-five. We don't have too much Hispanic representatives in my neighborhood. We need to develop workforce or Wilmington first, first before anything. Why would we allow this to happen? So we are putting these people of Wilmington first. Slow down, please, let's create a job, let's train them, let's give them the opportunity. Vamos a darle la oportunidad a nuestros residentes en esta noche para que nosotros, todos los que votaron against it, why are you giving this us tonight? Why? Why don't we know about this before? Why are we getting this paper passed through our seat right now? Why? Why don't we know about this information before? So we are watching you, but with all your respect, we will hold you accountable next year. Let's vote no. Our Hispanic community needs you. We are being forgotten, we are not being autistic in English, we don't have Spanish, everything is English. Why, they're forgetting us? Why? Why English? Why English? Well, we are not being held. And these people, my city, I'm I'm so sorry to say, we, these people that are voting in favor, we're gonna make sure that you're not gonna hold your position next year because I'm gonna make sure that my Hispanic community, we know that you are against to hold the jobs in Wilmington. So why? Why? I don't understand. I know about and and I'm getting so many comments, but let me tell you one thing, all I know is what I have read, the information that has been sent to me, okay? And now it's not negative. I have gotten a lot of good feedback and I have gotten this tonight. I have gotten a lot of this that I don't accept it. I don't accept this ordinance and again this ordinance and we need a Hispanic representation. Nosotros necesitamos representante hispano. Where are my Hispanic people here tonight? Don't understand. Where are any Hispanic community here tonight? Anybody represented this, the Hispanic community? No, we are being forgotten about it. And I'm here tonight, I'm here tonight to let you know that with every, with everything I can, with all, with all my knowledge that I know of, I'm gonna make sure next year you all have been forgotten like you forgot us. So let's, let's vote no, let's vote no, let's vote no, let's vote no. Thank you and thank you. And by the way, thank you for those, let me say something, thank you for those city councilmen that took the time to get back to me even though I know they are against the vote tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Brandon Fletcher. And thank you for joining us, please uh please watch your step.
We can't address specific council members, right?
That's correct.
All right.
I'm the president.
All right, cool, cool, cool. I just wanna say I'm here today to tell the city council to vote no on this resolu- on this ordinance tonight, vote no. We're watching you, the people are watching you. We will not be deceived by the mayor of this city giving these council members talking points to deceive the people of this city. You think you're funny, Porzicki, by introduct- by bringing this out here to confuse the people of the city of Wilmington, making people believe that, oh, the state, there's a state law that says the city of Wilmington now has the responsibility relating to residency to make this change. Yeah, but they have to determine it, they have to vote on it. So yes, this does say that the state gave the city of Wilmington the opportunity to make the change, but it's up to these council members to voice their concerns, to vote no on this resolution. Mike Porzicki, where are you? Al Mills, where are you? Councilwoman Fields, where are you?
Please, please, I'll address any council members.
Point of order.
Please don't do.
Where are you?
Thank you.
You don't come to city council meetings, you don't, excuse me, you don't come to neighborhood meetings, you don't come out to the community when we need you, we're going to vote you out. September tenth, twenty-twenty-four, vote them out, vote these council members out? They are regurgitating Mayor Porzicki's talking point? Vote no. The last thing I have to say about this is, Mike Porzicki and this city council approved a budget in twenty-twenty-four which gave the city of Wilmington so much money to invest in development. Eighth and Orange, they rezoned the parcel of land for a nine, for a a two-hundred-and-forty-three unit building. The Crosby Hill, Fifth and Shipley, who is it for? So you put all this money into development and now you're trying to attract people here, but you say, "Oh, we're just gonna lift it up so, you know, they don't have to live here." What was the purpose of the development? What is the purpose of pouring hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars into a "It's Time Wilmington" campaign? To live, work, and play in Wilmington, live, work, and play in Wilmington.
Thirty seconds.
Yeah, and the last thing I just have to say is, you know, this is about our community. People are suffering right now, they need jobs, but when you bring this out as a game and when people go on the website and they don't see these jobs, what are you doing? Take a stand. We will support you if you do the right thing, but we will vote you out if you pass this resolution, if you pass this ordinance.
Thank you. Uh so again, just before we, before we call up our next, our next uh person from the community to speak, we're gonna ask you just to please, uh please try to refrain from 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 yelling out. Everyone will have an, have an opportunity to come and uh speak, but please, please try to just uh keep ordering here. And also, before we, before we move on, I want to uh just clear a couple of things up. I don't want, I don't want the blame to be placed on anyone who doesn't deserve it. So that the, the paper, the forms that you have received uh about the law and about the vacant, the vacant jobs, I wanted you to have that information. And I wanted you to have that information so that you know what, what jobs are vacant so that you can spread the word and that you can, that people know that there are vacancies around those jobs and it's just not the fifteen that are on the website. And I also wanted you to have the law that, that Dover passed giving council the authority to pass an ordinance and that ordinance has not been passed. So I just wanted you to have that information so that when the administration started hiring, they did that without council passing an ordinance. So that's, I just wanted you to have that information, it came from me and didn't come from any other council members, but it was, it was, it was to you to have me be more informed. Okay, thank you. And next we have Lanita Brooks.
Hello, everyone. Um, a lot of you guys know who I am, my name is Lanita Brooks. Um, I lost one of my sons here in Wilmington, Delaware, right over on the um north side in uh twenty-fifteen to gun violence. I'm not understanding why we need to be here tonight. Why do we need to be here tonight to ask y'all to do what's best for our city? I'm not understanding, it's not, it don't take a rocket scientist, it don't take a degree, like, I'm not understanding, like, why do we gotta come here at eight oh five to ask y'all to do the right thing? We voted y'all in there because, in here because we thought you guys would do the right thing for our city. And I don't, I work at Elton Mallin, I shouldn't have to go all the way to Elton Mallin to find a decent job when there's one right here in this building for me somewhere or the next building over there. Like, I wanna work here, I can be a, I can be a victim services uh specialist. I didn't, I didn't learn so much in, in the al- almost nine years that my son been going, like, I, I know what I'm talking about. I can talk to other people and give them the information they need or the information I don't have, train me, train me, train me, 'cause I know, I'm, I'm still young enough to where, I'm only forty-six years old, I'm still young enough to where, though, I know what I'm doing. If you give me the chance to, to, like, to learn it, where I'm at now, I had to learn what I'm doing, but I had to go elsewhere, out of the city of Wilmington where I got paid taxes here and in Elton, I don't think that's fair. I do not think that's fair when I can get one of these jobs that's on this paper, playing this day. I can be trained and on top of that, I'm scared to leave my kids here, God forbid something happened to me, my kids is, can't get no job here. Like, I don't feel them, I mean, them safe here in Wilmington, Delaware under this. Like, I'm scared, I'm scared if something happened to me, what is gonna, what is gonna happen to my kids and my grandkids? Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Helen Furman. Helen Furman. Is Helen Furman still with us? Next we have Malik Harris.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You know, I'm gonna keep this short and sweet because it's gonna be a summation, to be honest with you, but Mike Porzicki, no more games like you've been playing. We're not playing no more games. You know, Malcolm X said one time, "No more of this." How can seven people that we put in place, put in office, even question whether they should vote or not? How, how can, how can you? So, so are you with us or are you with Porzicki? Because the bottom line is, you're right, he's leaving. But you know the thing about it is, the game, the game that they're playing is, Porzicki's gonna leave, he gonna, and he's gonna share the white wealth by bringing in John Carney. So, so John Carney is gonna continue to do the same thing Porzicki has put in place. We're not doing that, we're not doing that. The mayor's a joke. First of all, a few years ago, he went to several of our churches, our black churches, and paid them. One pastor said, "I don't know who you're voting for, but I'm voting for this man over here." Now what do you think, what do you think the rest of the congregation gonna do? They go for that man over there? No more games like that. We're sick and tired of being sick and tired. So he thinks he can do anything he want to. So he go over South Bridge and get a brother over South Bridge to pose in a picture together. I was in a meeting uh a few years ago, the first thing Porzicki said was, "Black people don't have a leadership." Now, it's not something I heard, I was in the meeting, and two people in this, in this uh room right now, it was there, "Black people don't have leadership." Well, once you, once we tell you who our leader is, you're gonna just kill him, like, anything, like you, like you've been doing, you're gonna kill him or try to have him killed. We don't want. to continue to follow the leadership of Mike Porzicki nor Carney. What kind of governor, leave the governor and, and, and go to, go be a mayor?
Yeah, thirty seconds.
You'd be surprised, you'd be surprised, the games that they play. So the seven people that's sitting here, that's gonna vote, we used to call him Uncle Tom's, but I'm not going there. But, but what I wanna do is please consider. Now, if you have any guts.
That's your time, sir.
Thank you, thank you, sir. But if you have any guts, you'll say, "Oh, no, I'm changing my vote." Power to the people.
Thank you. This is James Taylor. Still here with us, James Taylor? Thank you. Thank you for joining us, please watch your step as you approach the podium. Mr. Taylor, to your lower right-hand corner will be your, your time clock. Thank you.
So it sounds like it's been, uh, some spirited discussion in here. I was out in Newcastle with the brothers, and I was pleased to learn that the comment was still going on. So I wanted to make sure I got down here because so many of the brothers couldn't. I prepared statements, so I'm just gonna read from that, you know, because I believe other folks are, are, you know, gonna give a, a, a more, a buoyant response to this foolishness that's going on down here this evening. "Like many residents, I was shocked to learn that the council is considering a rush vote on lifting the residency requirement for employment with the city of Wilmington. This is for three reasons. First, the balance of powers principle on which our government is built requires that each branch of government jealously guard the power that it is invested with. So when a mayor who should be a lame duck comes to council, among whom is seated at least two attorneys, and says that he plans to violate city ordinances that the council volitionally and duly enacted because he has chosen to ignore his legal education..." Y'all didn't know that, that the mayor has a law degree, did you? "And, and has chosen..." Excuse me, I done lost my place on this, on this phone. "...because he has chosen to ignore his legal education and place his faith in some specious interpretation of a recently passed statute. I would expect that instead of dignifying this po- this potentially illegal behavior with a vote, council would request a certification of law and a temporary injunction to determine the validity of the administration's reasoning, assess whatever legal liability might exist from things like the breach of a collective bargaining agreement, and, given the council's recent concerns about ethics and nepotism, discuss how to publicly respond to the mayor's actions should it be found that he did proceed illegally and expose the city to legal risk. Second, in these unprecedentedly difficult economic times for city residents, and amid the uncertainty introduced by the retirement of our state's most influential federal delegation member, one would think that the last thing the council would wanna do is redistribute city revenue away from the local and state economy by paying people who will carry said revenue to Delaware suburbs."
Thirty seconds.
"If not Pennsylvania, New Jersey, or Maryland. This is especially salient, salient in the case of black members of the council, who should know better than anyone that government employment is one of the most reliable paths into the middle class for Wilmingtonans of color in the last two generations. Finally, this issue was considered long-settled by many city residents. There hasn't been enough debate around this issue in the public square. This problem could be easily remedied by making it a talking point in the upcoming campaign season, which will allow time for the judiciary to weigh in. And for these reasons, I strongly urge you to table this matter until either a higher legal authority or the people have had the opportunity to opine on it. Failure to do so would constitute a breach of the public trust that is inconsistent with the council's recent deliberations on ethics and would unnecessarily unleash a torrent of legitimate doubt and understandable bitterness toward whatever decision the council arrives at, when we should all be working to reduce acrimony ahead of a time when unity and the city desperate, when the city desperately needs unity in local government, because we're facing one of the most consequential elections in our time. Thank you. Y'all have a good evening."
Thank you. Thank you. Next we have Carla, Carla Peak. Carol Peak, Carolyn Peak, oh, Ms. Peak, sorry. Ms. Carla, please be careful when you, uh, when you approach the podium. Please watch your step. Can you, can you, uh, adjust your mic a little bit, Ms. Carolyn? Just pull your mic down a little bit, thank you.
Okay. As I stand here, my name, well, my address, Mr. President and city council members, I want you to forgive me if I show and express some strong emotions tonight. I feel I'm probably the oldest person here. I'm almost 80 years old, and I've seen the city go through a lot of changes. As I stand here and we discuss this law, I want you to know that I am against the lifting of this ordinance. You see, the law that is already on the books, it makes sense. It keeps our employees connected to our community. They live here, they spend money here, and hopefully that they understand our needs here. I must stress that the decision to remove this law gives the unfortunate impression that there is a lack of talent and skills within our city borders. But that is simply not the case. We are a city beaming with talent, potential, and capable individuals who call Wilmington home. So rather than looking beyond our borders, we should be investing in the talent right here in our community, friends. So I ask that you recognize this administration decision of what it really is. Is it an attempt to genify our city at the expense of the residents? Or do you want to displace the heart and soul of Wilmington? The very people who have invested in this community and who have worked hard to call Wilmington home? It's unfortunate that we were qualified enough when you needed our votes, but are unqualified to work within our city. The statement that is made, "No city residents qualified for the city jobs," is a ca- is a case, is a cast a negative view in the city that is already struggling in its reputation. This is a time when there's, when our city needs strong community leadership, not actions, but not actions that alienate those who have long been the backbone of our community. Let me be clear. I am not against welcoming individuals from outside to work in our city. Wilmington has always been a place open to diversity and new ideas. However, the opportunities that arise should, and without question, be offered to our residents first. Our residents are the lifeblood in this city, and they should have the first chance to prosper from its growth and development. The residency law is not a barrier. It's a lifeline to ensure that Wilmington remains a place where its people come first. We must stand united, nurturing our local talent, and ensuring that Wilmington remains a city that embraces its people and their value and their contributions. So my question that I've had is, how did you arrive at the statement, "No residents is qualified for the city jobs"? What is the percentage of black and Hispanic that has applied for these positions? And you say they are unqualified. What is the percentage of non-blacks and non-Hispanics applied, and you say that they are unqualified? A population of 70,000 people plus, and we cannot find qualified people to work within this city? Rubbish. Rubbish. And city council, as I look at you, you represent the whole city, the district, and you mean to tell me that in your district, you do not know people that is qualified to work in these positions? What are you doing? Do you know your districts? Do you know the resources in your districts? So my suggestion tonight for city council and for the administration, perhaps you need to network with local and higher institutions to inform them the skills that is needed in this workplace. Perhaps council and administration needs to take a class in culture competency. Last, perhaps you need to revisit and review the recruiting program. Build people and less buildings. Thank you so much.
Next we have Crystal Flowers. Crystal Flowers. And please watch your, watch your step as you come to the podium. When you're at the podium, you can see the monitor to your lower right-hand corner with your time. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I just say, no. Vote no. I'm not gonna get up here and talk about the jobs and we can't find nobody and, it's bigger than that.
Right.
It's really bigger than that. Uh, lifting the city ordinance? He done built up all that around here. Why you need to lift it? It's still in the city. You don't ask nobody, our council people, you don't come and talk to us, you don't ask us how we, but, but you vote us in, we vote you in. And then I call my council person Tuesday. "Oh, I'm having a meeting on Tuesday evening at 6:30. 1009 Sycamore Street." So, you just wanna drop that on me just like that? There are mothers and fathers in their graves turning over. They done plowed these streets of Wilmington, Delaware, for years. I've been in this city for 59 years of my life. My council person told me she been here for 20. And you gonna do what? You gonna do what?
Yup.
Have a conscience. Have a conscience. Because the choices that you make, I'm sitting in here, I'm watching council people look at each other and laughing like it's funny. This ain't funny. This is our life right here. I pay property taxes, and they raised my taxes. They raised my store. And then the only thing he did for me is boost my property value. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. But all that extra other stuff? That shouldn't go like that. We don't see our council people, you see them once, when they want you to vote for them. You call them, now you're, you're bothered to them. You bother them. You get on their nerves. They're social worker, they say. That's your job. That's what I pay you for. 'Cause I'm paying you out of my taxes. That ain't cool. It's not cool. I got grandchildren, my children are grown. I'll be in the city for the rest of my life, 'cause I'm not going nowhere, and ain't nobody gonna force me out. But it's bigger than residency. And the officers, okay, keep them here five years. Somebody got, a young man said somebody got shot on the east side. Cop cars are sitting on the corners all day long, with them sitting in there. They bring white cops to the, the area where situations is going on. And I know the police, they protection.
Thirty seconds.
But they're nasty. They're mean, they're rude, and they're disrespectful. And Captain Campos, Chief Campos now, need to, you know, have a little training for them. You know, but this ain't funny. And I told you to pray on it. Pray before you make that decision. If the council member in here, he been on his computer the whole time he been in here, and his name is on the list, he don't care, 'cause he already know what his vote gonna be. Keep it real to keep it right. It's bigger than residency. And don't no governor come back from mayor, you, you be mayor, you be council person first, mayor, then you go to governor, then you go down Washington. You don't do it backwards. He need somebody in there to finish what he started. I still can't get my street paved that they did tore up. He done hired his buddies to come in there and fix the pipes, damage my home. Then I had to go through my homeowner's insurance. When I contacted them to get reimbursed for my out-of-pocket expenses, they told me it wasn't their fault. You work for me.
Thank you. Worlda Spence. Worlda Spence. Thank you for joining us. Uh, please, please be careful when you, when you get to the podium. Alright, thank you. And you also notice your, the monitor to your lower right-hand side with your time.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Worlda Spence, and I concur to everything that was said tonight. Vote them out. Yes. Because they're not doing the job that they were voted in to do. And then they wanna bring someone in here that does not live in the city but to take positions? I say no to that. If they're not doing their job, they wanna bring someone in that's not gonna do their job either. So yes, vote them out. I've had problems trying to contact my council person. Call them up, they don't return the calls. They, I've told them about the streets. The city came in, tore the streets up because new townhomes was built on the street. We had pipes sitting up high. My Audi's in the shop right now. So therefore, the city won't even come in and pave the streets with the council people that's there now. Why you think you gonna bring somebody in that ain't gonna do the job even more so? So yes, vote them out. I can't take it no more. My feathers is, is up in the air with the, with the city now. So guess what? Don't get them up no further. Please don't. Because I'm gonna still vote you out in every position you try to get into. Because you're not doing your job now, and you won't do it any further. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next we have C. Henry. C. Henry. Everyone, please try to refrain from, from yelling, please. Everyone, please try to refrain from, from speaking out. C. Henry. Alright, thank you. Thank you for joining us, and please be careful when you approach the podium. I give you a friendly 30-second reminder.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pernelia Henry. Um, I'm a resident of the city of Wilmington. I had to become a resident of the city of Wilmington to get the job. And any position that I took, be it working for the U.S. Treasury Department, I had to move in certain areas to take that position. Why? It was a requirement. And we need to maintain this requirement. Because we have access to the neighbors that we can help as employees of the city of Wilmington. And we need to just help each other out. Okay? So I had to buy a home to keep the job here. So one of my colleagues wondered, "If you're gonna lift the residency, do we get reimbursed for the homes that we bought?" So one of my colleagues wondered if you're gonna lift the residency, do we get reimbursed for the homes that we bought? Please let me know, let us know. Okay, let us know, please. Because we invested in this community. Okay? I could've went somewhere else, but I'm from Delaware. I moved back to Delaware. Because I wanted to make a difference from what I learned at being with the U.S. Treasury Department. And I wanted to bring that difference here to the city of Wilmington. So it bothers me when I hear people, city council people, say that you don't have talent here. You have a lot of talent here. I'm one of them. I'm one of them. So stop going with the okie-doke. That you can't find people to work for the city of Wilmington. You're not looking. You're not marketing well. Okay? You have to look inside of where you live. You got so many talented people here. So many talented people. Yes, I know it's twisted biases. You know, talk about the roads that we have, people coming in doing work. I have a dead tree in front of my house. I called Public Works and nobody came yet. But if I knocked down the tree, the money's coming out of my pocket. But you, do you think I'm gonna get reimbursed? It's going on three years. But I still, I'm committed to the city of Wilmington. I was born here. I left for a while to get some experience in different positions, but I came back to share that experience with my people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we have Carl Williams. I'm sorry. Carl Williams is here but did not sign up for public comment. Is that correct? I mean, okay, come forward. Thank you for joining us and please be careful when you reach the podium. I'll catch you.
Okay. What I've heard in the last four, five comments kinda speaks to the whole thing. I just wanted to make a comment. You know, I understand certain things and I'm trying to make sure it's accurate. That the mayor requested his, um, coordinates or buddies or whatever to change the law so he can get his boy through. All right. Now, uh, that's good politics, but we talking about that, um, duration of residency law? Where'd it come from? The good old boys back in, um, when they started the Constitution. So constitutionally, federally, it's law. It's law. But they gave the rights to the states, and that's a little shaky, to do their own thing, and most states did. So most people, they were against it. Now, you know where duration of law came from because y'all good Christians, right? So y'all know that it's Leviticus. All right? You know that's law in Leviticus because if you're Christian, you gotta go with it. You know, that's Leviticus twenty-four, twenty-two. You shall have one manner of law as well as for the stranger and as for yourselves. So that's law. So that's, you know, Christian law. Hebrew law. But many states said, no, we ain't hearing that. And they established themselves, um, duration of residency. They went to court and, you know, and they won in most cases. They won it. So they don't have to follow the federal position. But it can go to court. If it goes to court, and I can name you about eight, nine, ten states that won duration of residency. All right, but when, if you support, if you support duration of residency. My concern is if you go through with this, where does it stop? You know, you have to be here a certain amount of time before you can get a job. Or, you know, in the government. So where does it stop? So you need somebody for something and they come from Missouri. They got the job. Alaska. Hawaii. Puerto Rico. It's fine with me, but that's what y'all agree with. But that's what y'all wanna do, to be able to import somebody here to do your job. Your job. They wanna farm it out. And I don't know if it's accurate whether or not they say they looked, couldn't find nobody, hard to believe. You know? The last couple sisters made it very plain, they understand, they hear you. These are good human beings, they hear you. We didn't look hard enough, we busted. We did not look hard enough. And then when it comes down to it, if you're looking for something, I do it all the time, you know, old seniors is him. Where my glasses? Where my glasses? I can't find them, what do I do? Just say, to get them, go get a new pair?
That's your time, sir.
No. I would say somebody help me find my glasses. Y'all need some help, somebody find. If you don't know how to do it, hire somebody and do it. That's all I got to say. All right?
Thank you. Thank you. Um, last name Denson, first name begins with a D. All right, thank you for joining us. And please be careful when you step to the podium, your lower right-hand corner, you will see a timeframe, I give you a thirty-second reminder when you have thirty seconds left.
Hello, my name is Demian Denson. I don't wanna regurgitate what's been said, but, uh, basically, uh, you know, I believe city council members need more time to discuss how they can best come up with a residency policy and a plan to support Wilmington residents and fill the vacant positions for the city of Wilmington. Uh, voting to get rid of the current policy is not what neighboring cities similar to the population size of Wilmington are doing. Can we please hold the legislation to make an amendment or better support all residents? Uh, keeping the residency policy gives accountability to employee laws that they in office will have to abide by. Give the opportunity to find and train through apprenticeships qualified local talent in Wilmington with total transparency. Our people need help. Um, every job that ever existed, whether entry level, business, corporate, or otherwise, was done by training, mentorship, and/or experience. Human beings are highly intelligent and they can learn anything. If you believe that Wilmington matters, offer these vacancies to residents first. Invest in our communities. It's Garvey City, not Gotham City. God is watching, vote no.
Thank you. I just wanna make sure that Carmen Wright, who was with us, that she did not sign for public comment. Carmen Wright? Okay, thank you. Thank you for joining us. Please be careful when you reach the podium. I give you a thirty-second reminder when your time is almost finished.
I just wanna address the people who are here tonight. And to let you know a little bit about my story. My family's been in Wilmington for five generations. I have some relatives in Seaford, but most of us here in Wilmington, Delaware, all my life. I've been in Wilmington, Delaware for sixty-three years. When King was assassinated, I was here when Wilmington fell apart. I was bred and brought home from the hospital to a house in Riverside. I taught for thirty years, just retired recently. And what I dedicated most of that time to was teaching black children who they are. I let them know that they came from a very historical place in this nation. The east coast was settled first. Wilmington is a very important city in the history of the United States. Not just to mention that the President of the United States happens to be from here. But just because we are on the east coast, we were the closest for them to get the boats off. And for us, when I say us, I mean this. Here's the only question that matters in your life. What have I done to make it better? And when you see these people that are supposed to represent you, represent their own good? Ask yourself, what have I done to make it better? I worked the polls. I see how strong our commitment to vote is. I have seen that when you make black folk mad, you changing things. I have seen that when you make women mad, you're changing things. So the change needs to be made right now. I love Wilmington, Delaware. Been here all my life and never had no desire to live anywhere else. Our city belongs to the people, just like my grandfather who said, everybody else getting on the train going north? I'm getting up out of Macon, Georgia, I'm taking my family north, and I bless his heart that he did so. We can make Wilmington what we want Wilmington to be because Wilmington is ours. Wilmington is ours.
Thank you. Michael Fawcett. Is Michael Fawcett still with us? I thank you for joining us and please be careful when you reach the podium. I'd ask everyone in the audience to please remain respectful.
My name is Michael Fawcett. I am originally from Pennsylvania. I was hired in two thousand and four and moved to the city of Wilmington in two thousand and five. And I never went back to Pennsylvania. I consider myself a Wilmingtonan. I pay wage taxes, I spend money in the city. When I came on the job, my class had fifteen hundred applicants in the process for twenty-six positions. That gave a whole lot of leeway in terms of figuring out who we wanted to hire. We could have a whole huge applicant pool, which makes for better candidates. The more candidates you have, the better chance you have to get solid employees. This year, we had well under a hundred applicants. For probably thirty jobs, I would imagine. We were able to field an academy of seven. And that is with all of the recruitment efforts that our department and our leadership has been lauded by this council to increase diversity. We all want diversity. It makes our job easier. I get it, I have a lot of stacks when I come upon a complaint because I don't necessarily look like the citizen that I'm serving. And they have a preconceived notion of me that I have to get past. I like them seeing all of us working together regardless of our race. And that's where I'm coming from. We have lost more officers than that, that seven that we have in the academy. We have since lost more than that in the time that the academy started, and it's not even over yet. Due to retirements, due to going to other departments, federal, state, other places. And it's only gonna keep happening more. We have, I believe, seventy-five officers right now in the gray, it's called, which means eligible to retire. I'll be one of those in July. I don't plan on retiring, I wanna stay. So this decline in officers, though, is untenable for a safe city in the future if we are losing officers at this rate and not gaining more officers coming in. We're trying to hire, we're doing everything we can. I'm at the community resource fairs and all the other stuff. You can lead a horse to water, but you can't make it drink, it's the old saying. We're doing what we can. I was twenty-three when I came on the job, uh, and I had no problems moving to the city. I didn't have any wife, I didn't have any kids, I was a young man. I moved to Brown Town, loved it down there. Many of today's applicants, though, with the economics that are going on are older and have families. And I think that's actually a good thing because older people coming into my job have more life experience. With more life experience comes more empathy because they've been through a lot more. You can't have empathy for someone that's going through problems with their spouse or been assaulted or whatever if you've never experienced anything in your life. So we want those older people that have families, that have life experience to come in here. But with the housing market the way it is right now, in order to have to buy something in here, it's not tenable for them to do that with the rates of mortgages and, uh, interest rates and everything else, not to mention uprooting their kids and their school systems and so on and so forth where they might be close by. I wanted to be a Philadelphia police officer because I grew up in Upper Darby. I couldn't do that because their residency requirement was such that you had to live within the city before even applied. Now Wilmington is not that bad with the residency requirement.
Please allow him to speak. You have thirty seconds.
Thank you, sir. Our numbers in such decline that it will cause problems in terms of speedy service. When you call nine-one-one, how fast can an officer get to you? One thing that the council will want to think about, with the numbers going the way that they are, if it continues in this fashion, you could see in ten years us not be able to field a police department and being taken over by Delaware State Police or Newcastle County. None of us Wilmington cops want that.
Please allow him to speak, please allow him to finish speaking.
We want to serve the city and we want to remain all together. If the city loses its department because we don't have enough officers, then you guys are not gonna have us that.
That's your time, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next we have Rick Perillo. Next we have Rick Perillo, Rick Perillo. Rick, last name begins with a P, is he still with us? Colby Owens.
How y'all doing tonight? I just got off a train from Brooklyn, I've been traveling all this month. And one thing I love about coming home is my community. And when I look at who's been here to speak tonight, a multiracial, multigenerational, multireligious coalition of people to say, do not vote for this ordinance. Saying, say, vote no on eliminating residency. Only have three minutes, a hundred eighty seconds. I didn't wanna be up here, but it was forced upon me. It is sad that we have come to this moment right now. Sad. We just got this sheet and thank you, Council President, for finally someone handing out what positions are actually open here. Because if you look at the website, this month, there's only fifteen on it. Last month, it was only twelve, the month before that, it was only nine. So it's really not any investment into actually trying to fill these positions if you truly wanted to fill these positions. If you wanted to fill these positions, why don't y'all put the money up to have job fairs right here in the city-county building? Why don't you go to every community center all across the city and actually put the work into hiring these people if y'all care about them? But let's talk about something. If y'all can sit here and vote to give our parks to major developers, y'all can sit here to vote, to put some money into a workforce development program. Y'all can sit here to incentivize city workers who are coming in here to give them actual incentives to move into the city of Wilmington. Help them with down payment, um, on their new properties. Let's create homeownership here. It doesn't matter what color you are, let's stabilize our neighborhoods. But see, the odds that I wanna focus on that, y'all wanted to focus on something the mayor said. He said, oh, well, I'm gonna do whatever. But guess what? Y'all are your own independent body. Y'all have the power. Y'all have the power. And it's supposed to flow from the ground up, it's supposed to flow from the community. And then you wanna talk about the police? Let's talk about it. Since twenty-twenty, there has been a downfall in applications for all police departments across the nation. I wonder why? What happened in twenty-twenty? Maybe it was because police were put on the spotlight for murdering unarmed black people. And after George Floyd and after all these other incidents, Breonna Taylor, Armaud Arby, you still saw police killing unarmed black people. You saw police right here. Officer Waters beating a black man, banging his head up against the wall. You saw a cop lie on Yahim Harris. We lost Lamont Moses. So let's talk about it. If y'all truly... If y'all truly want to change recruitment, change your tactics and change how you engage with the community. Become our neighbors, work together, build community together, break bread together. But yet y'all want to shoot us in the back.
You have twenty seconds.
Thank you. This resolution is not the answer. Let's come together. I'm from the first district. And I'm glad one of the council people who live in the first district, Councilman White, is on the right side of this fight. I hope that the others change their mind. But since I only have a few seconds left, I'll leave you with a quote from one of my favorite people, James Baldwin. Freedom is not something anybody can be given. Freedom is something that people take. And people are as free as they want to be. So to this council, I say to you, will you free yourself? Or will you continue to oil the chains that the mayor has put on y'all?
Thank you. Michelle Lee. She left, okay. Kahadi Robinson. Kahadi Robinson. Kadija, okay, I'm sorry, Kadija Robinson. Thank you for joining us and please, please watch your step once you get to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kadija Robinson and I am here in agreement with everyone that yes, no is the way to go. However, I do want to do a little bit of history because I used to be a city employee and I started in the city and I'm gonna tell this, and I started in nineteen eighty-nine. I've been a resident of the city of Wilmington all of my life. We have had this residency issue for a long time. And it's always stemmed from policemen not wanting to live in the city. We've had two referendums that have gone out to vote for the residents of the city of Wilmington. And every time the referendum came back, no, the community does not want this. We had House Bill eight-twenty-two, is that what it was? And down in Dover. Because they've decided that they have an agenda that does not include the residents of the city of Wilmington. So Mayor Petwicki announced, oh, I'm not going to run again. But now the governor wants to come and run the city. And then the city comes in in July and does a reassessment of middle management salaries so they can make a determination to give more people more money so then you can bring in your cronies and your group so they can come in outside of the city? And we can't live the way we want to live? I have watched this current mayor police out people that have been here forever. People with situations, people with problems. I have gone to, when they were in election season and asked questions about homelessness because I work in that arena. It's not addressed. Our cares and our concerns are not addressed. So if this is truly an issue, then give it back to the people who live here. And by the turnout tonight and by all the comments that I've heard, the word is no. This is not what we want. This is our community. This is not what we want to see happen. This is not what we want to do. But the flip side of that for our community is, until we come together as one and stop running around as independents and whoever gives me the most money, then that's the vote that I will give. And I'm not worried about my neighbor next door and I'm not my brother or my sister's keeper. Then we won't be able to come together as one and do what we need to do for this city. Because right now this city looks very bad. It looks very bad. Right now we have a mayor that we shouldn't have had if we had have done what we were supposed to do two elections ago. I'm just saying. I've been a resident all of my life and I cannot stand what I see. Because this is not our city anymore and we must take it back, no.
Thank you. You're welcome. Adrian. Artist, Adrian. All right, thank you. Thank you for joining us, please be careful once you reach the podium. I give you a thirty-second reminder when your time is almost up.
Good evening, everybody. So, give me one second, pulling up my notes. So, my name is Adrian Artist. I promise you that's my real name. I'm a lifelong Delaware resident. I currently reside in District Two in the Triangle section. I currently work in HR and I hear the residency concerns, I handle residency. And I'm telling y'all, it's more than what y'all think. Even with the mayor's report that came out. So, this doesn't just affect police and fire. This also affects the workforce at large in office and in the field. It used to be that the buying market was the only thing that was challenging and competitive. Renting is just the same, if not more. As of July twenty twenty-three, BPG has built more than twenty-two hundred units in Wilmington and another seven hundred units under development or construction, including a two-hundred-and-forty-three unit building that just broke ground last Friday. And many of our employees can't afford them. We have a multi-generational workforce. And since the pandemic, the work landscape has changed significantly. And believe it or not, y'all, things are changing and people want flexibility, not restraint. A person's permanent location does not dictate their quality of work. I know plenty of people who call my phone and say, Ms. Adrian, Ms. Artist, I can't afford to live here, I'm struggling to find somewhere to live. And I don't want to spend my entire paycheck. I don't want to spend my entire paycheck not to live above my means, but to live comfortably, to live safely. There are rents that are in different areas that are extorting. Over two thousand dollars that people can't afford. And that's two thousand dollars worth of rent before we get to electric.
You have thirty seconds.
Thank you, sir. So I'm just going to say that although we're talking about applicants coming in and the hundreds of vacancies, we also run the risk of losing quality employees. We run the risk of losing quality employees and that number can increase. So I'm asking that if you don't vote yes, that at your very minimum, you vote for an amendment that gives the people an answer, but gives us the same balance.
Thank you. Gladys Spikes. Is Gladys Spikes still with us?
I'm sorry, I got distracted. That's, that's the key, right there. Yeah, we have to talk about it. I agree.
I thank you for joining us, Ms. Gladys, please be careful when you reach the podium. I give you a thirty-second reminder when your time is almost up.
My name is Gladys Spikes and I'm a longtime resident or I actually I'm a third generation family, our family was was here since the eighteen, nineteen hundreds. And so I'm I'm speaking, I'm going to speak from the heart. Actually, I'm representing the Compton Town Concerned Neighbors Association as well as myself. And I was a former city employee as well. All of the comments that were made prior to me, they're all very true. To those council persons that are voting no, we thank you. For those are that want to change the requirements of residency, I think that you need to reflect on what we've been through with the city of Wilmington. It took us a very long time to to even have a mayor of color. It started with Mayor Sills. And I would say that it's unbelievable that you would not consider the fact that the police, uh, the policemen back when I was, back in the sixties, they were required to stay here and they protected the neighborhoods much better because they had their families living here. And they wanted to make sure that they were protected. In terms of the fact that you can't find ninety-two persons to actually fill those positions, I agree with all the, all the persons that came before me that talked about the act, the actual fact that nothing has been publicized. I don't know that anyone knew about the ninety-two positions until this evening. So we would like to thank President Congo for providing that information. It seems that whenever there's a person that has a concern about the fact that they wanted to move out of the city.
You have thirty seconds.
That's not, that's not acceptable. I agree with all of the people that have gone before us. It's most important that you reflect and take your responsibilities seriously. I'm encouraging you to vote no for this amendment or this ordinance. And also I would go further to say that you've had some additional information that was given to you to maybe reconstruct or add more time. Um, that sounds fair.
That's your time, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Uh, so I, I really believe that we need to come together and you need to listen to the constituency. We're all saying no. So as you go to vote, it's important that you take that under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Tony Dunn. Thanks for joining us, Mr. Dunn.
Good evening to the audience, City Council. I'm also a longtime Wilmingtonan, over sixty years. My mother was an activist, Beatrice Dunn. And Hicks Anderson was my mentor. And I can say this, they would be proud to know so many people came out to say no to this. These before us, before you, City Council members that are voting to change the residency, they would be turning over in their graves. They knew what was right for us and for us to be employed as Wilmingtonans. And it's a shame to have so many of our Afro-American City Council people here today with the authority to do what's right by these people, by these citizens. Don't let them down. I don't think they're playing this time. And you got to understand, we understand about the Uncle Toms. We do understand. I'm from the second district. And I work closely with my councilperson. And I believe that if you guys change this, you're taking jobs from our community. And our community means something. And we have talent in our communities. These jobs haven't been given to our City Council people to be able to give to the twenty-five-hundred Civic Association, Brandywine Civic Association. We didn't have this list, we just got it. These jobs can be filled. We don't have to look outside of the city. The police do their job. They just have to live here to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this time we're going to go to our, our virtual audience. Just give me one moment, please. Uh, first we have Lisa Hemphill. W-I-T-N is Lisa Hemphill, still on? Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I just want to say that I love Wilmington.
Please, please.
I'm a lifelong resident.
I'm gonna let you start over, please, can we please restart her time? Those who are in council chambers with us, please give respect to those who are speaking now virtually, thank you.
I'm a lifelong city resident. I'm a loyal city employee for over thirty-four years. I love Wilmington, I love my community, I'm an executive officer on my civic association. I'm very involved in my community and my neighborhood. I love my job, I love working for the city. I didn't have to move here for my job, I was already here and I have no intention of leaving. There's been a lot of misinformation put out there tonight regarding what it means to eliminate the residency requirement. And I, I understand that it comes from a place of fear and it's, it breaks my heart a little bit. You know, there was a time when I too believed that residency was the best solution for creating a workforce which would operate in the best interests of the neighborhoods in which employees lived. But this is no longer a persuasive argument in a post-pandemic world because it's just not true anymore. People can work from anywhere and yes, residents should benefit from city jobs. And there are plenty of qualified applicants already living in the city, I agree with all of that. The problem is, they are not, they are not applying for these jobs and that's a fact.
Please allow her to speak.
Since nineteen sixty-four, when residency was first enacted, it's been abolished, reinstated and reduced to complete ineffectiveness. When I first started working for the city, the requirement was lifetime, the lifetime of your city employment. You were required to live in the city. In nineteen ninety-eight, the resident requirement was reduced to twelve or fifteen years, depending on your hire date, and then to five years in two thousand and five, which is what it is now. So think about that, five years, that's all you're required to live in the city, that's what it is right now. How many of the seventy percent of eligible city employees are already living outside of the city? How many people are turning down city jobs or not even applying because it's not worth or even possible to uproot their families for five years? You would be surprised, it's a lot and that's a fact. Five years actually acts as a deterrent. It took me seven years to be able to save up for a down payment on a house. And that was just before the housing market crashed. I could never afford to buy my city house today. I wonder how many members of this council have any idea how difficult it is to buy a house right now with no inventory and seven-point-eight percent interest rates? I know, I've been looking.
You have thirty seconds.
And how can a city employee making forty thousand dollars or less afford eighteen-hundred-dollar rent for a two-bedroom apartment? They can't, they might try, but it will inevitably lead to that employee leaving the city for a job where their basic right to affordable housing is not prohibited by an archaic law and that they aren't forced to choose a job over quality of life. There are people in this room who will say that if you care about the city of Wilmington and you care about the people who live in this city, you must uphold the residency. The reality, however, is that the city is failing to provide services at an acceptable level and is failing to hire and retain qualified employees because of the city residents. So please stop with the fear mongering and start being honest with your constituents. If you care about this city, abolish this worthless five-year residency for all non-elected employees by voting yes tonight. And let us get back to the business of running it. Thank you for your time, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next we have DeMar Quixote. DeMar Quixote. Okay, thank you. Mr. Hall?
Good evening.
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me. I live in the third district. That's really like a third world a lot of the time. I was in the building earlier, wearing the mask, handing out the flyer about Noramco, the pharmaceutical manufacturing polluter in the fourth district that Mr. Farrell lifted up about two hours ago. My name is Devon Marquinhos or just D. Marquinhos. Black and brown people are hate-first and worst when it comes to pollution and environmental impacts throughout the state and around the country and right here in Wilmington. On the east side and north side and the west side and south bridge, we are frontline and fence-line communities. I heard Chester lifted up earlier along with the sixth district councilwoman. There's a grant tonight for the officers. There's a grant for the police in Chester. They don't get the grants like they do in Wilmington. Here, the officers, they're highly funded. They're well-paid. They aren't as diverse as they could be. They police downtown. They don't police everywhere that they should be. I see Denrec, the Delaware Natural Resources and Environmental Control, as I see police. They're supposed to police the environment. They're supposed to police the air quality. They're supposed to police the corporations that exist in our communities that pollute. They need to be held accountable. Denrec, D-N-R-E-C. They're not trying to protect us. This is the first time there's been a public hearing about this company, Noramco. They've been around since the eighties. We need you to show up Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, before the community information session, which has been put together by Denrec and Noramco, because they're going to try to lie to us about what they're creating, what they're trying to bring. They're trying to create more pollution. They're trying to create more pharmaceuticals. They're trying to kill more people. They're trying to create more money for themselves. They're gonna lie and say that they're gonna create great-paying jobs for people in the community. But if they wanted to pay people that live in the community, they would have advertised the jobs. They would advertise the expansion. They would have let people know that they were trying to build on more. But they're clandestine. They're hidden in plain sight. People don't know that they exist. People don't know that they're there. So many people that I've talked to have never even heard of them. How much money they're gonna pay people doesn't matter. It's about the pollution. It's about the devastation. It's about the fact that there's a comative impact down South Bridge and right in the east side, right down, right here. They wanted to get this permanent expansion without the public knowledge. This is the first time there's been a hearing. But we need y'all to show up at this community information session on Tuesday early. I want y'all to be there at five o'clock. This is a grassroots movement. It's not astroturf. It's really grassroots because I don't have a lot of money. I don't have the capability of getting everybody there. I'm not gonna be able to drive y'all there in a truck. But this is something that is our community. It's self-defense. It's not punishment. What they're doing to us is a war crime.
Yeah, ten seconds.
When we look at Israel and Palestine and what they doing over there, what they're doing right here, it's a war on black and brown people. They wouldn't try to do this on Marsh Road where they have another location because on Marsh Road, there's other people there. And it also affects the riverfront. They breathing it in too. If you hear me, listen, Noramco, we can't allow them to continue to build and to kill kids, to kill people. I just lost my roommate. She had pneumonia. We got COVID coming out again. That's why I was wearing my mask earlier. Get real, y'all.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Margaret Guy.
Good evening, everyone.
Yes, thank you for joining us. We can hear you.
Okay. Give an honor to God and honor, you know, to all the councilpeople, President Congo. I grew up in Wilmington. I have my grandchildren. I still have family in Wilmington. I have children in my program in Wilmington. I love God. And I fight in Wilmington constantly in Jesus' name. I come in, or in everybody's district, that there's gun violence. My concern is the children, the summer youth programs, the programs that the children get summer jobs to keep them off the street. If other people are coming into the city with their children, flooding the city, and are taking jobs from the youth in Wilmington, that's my fear. Is this something that would happen if all these people come into the city, move into the city, bring their children in, or bring people in from outside the city to take the youth jobs? That's my fear. And I say no. Have a blessed night.
Okay, thank you. Alithia Smith Tucker.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you for joining us.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Hello, Honorable President Congo and City Council staff. I'd like to take a moment to share my thoughts on this residency expansion. I think for me, the problem is that we are addressing a problem with an improper solution. In terms of making sure that we're filling positions, we're using an outdated mode of recruitment. Here's a few suggestions for solutions that I think will be applicable for this time of day so that we'll have a full-throated effort for recruitment. First, I'd like to suggest that we develop an app that connects residents to services and jobs. More people are on the go and access data from their phones. And I think it's time that we create an app so that we can connect and provide useful information and services to our citizens. And also, I believe that there's an issue with our leadership. It is incumbent upon our leadership to have appropriate HR and recruiting strategies. They need to develop an innovative and strategic strategy that goes beyond the static limits of just a job posting page. We also should be leveraging our community partnerships. I ask that our council members make a motion to have a stay on this until we have better efforts for recruitment. And first and foremost, that a plan is developed so that all of these jobs are intentionally marketed to our community. One option is to update our existing webpage. We could have an ongoing ticker scroll that goes across the screen that advertises all the jobs at all times, anytime someone hits our website. I think this is weaponized incompetency in terms of what we expect from our administration. And their solution is just to throw away our residency requirement and just open it up without having really invested the time and effort to do sound recruiting.
Yeah, thirty seconds.
So I ask our council members to take a moment, take a pause, ask for a strategic plan for recruitment from your HR department and your administration before making such huge leaps and changing one of the few legislations that directly supports residents. I thank you and I yield.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Gork. Yeah, she may come forward. Thank you for joining us. Please watch your step once you get to the podium.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Michael James Gork. I am a twenty-five-plus-year employee of the City Police Department. I was hired in nineteen ninety-eight. And at the time, I lived in South Jersey. I was hired in February in nineteen ninety-eight. And by April of ninety-eight, I moved into the city where I lived for nine years. I'm also the FOP Lodge One president, and it's my honor to work in conjunction with the rank and file of the police department, the captains and the majors, as well as the chief of police, to bring this city the best police department that we can. That being said, I think it's important to understand what abolishing the residency requirement or modifying the residency requirement, what it will do and what it won't do. Since I was a first-year officer back in ninety-eight, twenty-six years old, I've been hearing the metropolitan police department, county and state were gonna merge and we'd be one metropolitan government to police departments, government, everything. I've been hearing that for twenty-five-plus years. I don't think that's... I think that's a long way away. I think residency isn't the end-all, be-all when it comes to that. It's just my opinion. I've been hearing it for half of my life. The other thing I don't think it'll do is, I don't think it will... It doesn't mean, I've been told by executive staff of this administration, I've been told by the personnel director, I've been told by the chief of staff, I've been told by the deputy chief of staff, city residents will have hiring preference. So if all things are equal between candidates and somebody lives outside the city, somebody lives in the city, that hiring preference will go to the person in the city. I don't think it means that preference wouldn't be given to city employees. I don't believe that to be the case. I don't have much time up here. I'll leave it to the legislative body here to speak and expand on my comments further. And thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Next, we have Christina Kelly. WITN is Christina Kelly, still with us?
Yes, sir. I'm here.
Okay, thank you for joining us. We can hear you.
Wonderful. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak, especially following that last comment. I think it's interesting to hear him, I'm sorry, to hear comments closed out referring to elected officials as being able to expand upon city department positions. It's highly concerning. I'd like to explore that further. However, back to my comment. I've heard a lot of discussion here about recruiting and whether or not people are applying. I've heard absolutely no discussion of the fact that every single position that is publicly available is below the average for cities this size in pay, every single position. So if we want to talk about affordability, maybe we should stop developing luxury apartment complexes. And maybe we should think about increasing the pay on these positions. You want to talk about attracting talent, well, then you need to pay that talent. You know, we have no problem authorizing a massive increase in pay to attract an interesting choice in police chief. But we're, again, stagnant on wages and below the average for cities this size in every single position listed. So let's get real. Let's stop using bullshit legislation as a way to hide our true intentions and why you guys are sitting there. Best of luck next September.
Thank you. Next, we have Cynthia Ferguson. Okay, thank you. Next, we have Harold Bozeman. Thank you. Next, we have M. Hayman. Thank you for joining us. Please watch your step.
Good evening, council members. The last time I stood in front of this council, I was awarded an award for exemplary service. I stand here today pleading with you to pass this resolution and/or a variance thereof.
Please allow him to speak. Please be respectful. Thank you.
Simple, the council members' arguments that are arguments that I've heard or seem to be based entirely solely on conjecture. A simple inference without proof or sufficient evidence. My colleagues and I can present scholarly articles as well as physical evidence for counterarguments. Other agencies are actively recruiting and poaching from us regularly. If you drive down ninety-five, you're gonna see a sign to apply for police officers. And in big, bold letters, you're gonna see no residency requirement. I'm afraid if you disagree with that, you're in woeful denial. Ms. Jones Potter went on, the current salary right now for a police recruit, fifty-six thousand dollars. Okay, at point-six-six, that takes you to net per pay without any deductions, the fourteen-twenty-one per pay, without any deductions, health insurance, anything like that. Now, let's apply those numbers to move anywhere into the city. Currently, right now, if you were to buy a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house, when it was three percent, that payment would have been eight-forty-one. Affordable. Four percent, nine-fifty-four. And currently, as of yesterday, your national interest rates for mortgages are fourteen, or eight percent. And that gives you a monthly payment of fourteen-ninety-seven on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home. You know, I know these numbers. I used to work for MBNA, did from fifteen to twenty-seven. So at this point, it's not really feasible. If I have bags under my eyes right now, it's because I've been up since three AM getting shooting suspects off the street. Was in for the shooting the other day. And we are bleeding. We can't attract, we need to do anything to acquire any, get applicants to apply. We have sent recruitment officers to HBCUs, to my alumni, University of Delaware. People don't want to do this job anymore. And if we can get rid of any impediment or what people perceive to be an impediment, I would implore that you do that. I'm gonna end on that note.
Next, we have Teresa Oliver. Teresa Oliver.
You know, you're not gonna boo him. This man just solved an unsolved murder.
Councilmember for better. Councilmember for better. Councilmember for better, please. Please don't engage with it.
I mean, President, you're not stopping it.
Okay, I'll allow everybody to give their emotions.
You know, I'm getting tired of hearing you. So you need to stop.
Councilmember for better. Please don't engage. Next, we have Teresa Oliver. Okay, thank you. Next, we have Dwayne Bensing. Okay. And next, we have...
Okay. Next, we have Karen. Karen, if you're still with us virtually, please raise your hand. Is there a different... We had a James Taylor who spoke in chambers. Is James Taylor still virtual? Okay. WITN, are you seeing anyone online? Okay.
From the west side, that's where he came from.
Next, we have George Evans. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Evans.
Good evening, council and Wilmington family. I'm a longtime resident of Wilmington. I've lived in Wilmington all of my life, and like you, I've had an invested interest in Wilmington and the quality of life in Wilmington. I'm a practicing attorney, and I've seen in terms of my view of legislation, and I've taken an opportunity to look at the legislation that suddenly appeared conveniently at this time, I guess suggested by the mayor. The persons who've already addressed this issue before me have indicated the history of the residency requirement. And as such, we've had a residency requirement that has changed over time to what it is now. At least a period of time, six months to if you're new hire and you're outside, and then five years. The statutes that were passed by the Senate and the House only confirm the authority of the city. And therefore, this piece of legislation that was suggested that the city no longer had a residency requirement, I don't find to be accurate at all. The issue, when we think in terms of the interests of the city, when we think in terms of the unemployment rate, and we look at it across the state, we can find that the unemployment rate is greater in the city of Wilmington than practically any other place within the state. It has a vested interest in seeing that the residency requirement is one that's maintained. When I think in terms of the arguments for recruitment, I think in terms of the hiring of the former Police Chief. And as I recall, the numbers for that particular salary was greater than at any former chief at any time during the course of the history of hiring persons to become employees of the city. I've also looked at the release that has been extended by the mayor, and it, as many who have come before me have indicated, it's something that they have not seen in some, in any other forum. But to me, it only depicts certain circumstances that we as citizens of Wilmington has entrusted this administration and council to address, and should be addressed in terms of what those issues are there. I would find that its release at this time is one that is suspect in terms of how it is that it was released, but it does not in any way bring about a solution to the issues that we have before us. And again, I am encouraging council to vote against this resolution that's been offered.
Thank you. Next, we have Christian Lauer. Thank you for joining us. Please watch your step.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Council President and council members, for hearing all of everybody who's in the chambers tonight and everybody who's online. I want to thank all the council members who've taken the time to talk with residents like me about the issue of residency requirements. And I'm here tonight just to say that I believe in residency requirements, and I urge you not to vote in support of any legislation that would eliminate them. I think it's it's throwing the baby out with the bathwater. You may have recruitment challenges, but I think that the recruitment challenges can be addressed by many of the things that people talked about here tonight. But I wanted to talk about why I believe in the residency requirement. I live in the city of Wilmington. I've been a resident for fifteen years, and a police officer, the reason I really like the residency requirement is because a police officer moved onto my block. And he did that because of the residency requirement, I think. I don't know. But he got a job at the Police Department, and he bought a house on my block. And through that experience, I got to know a police officer in a way that I never would have just seeing him drive by or even talking to them at events or you know, addressing public safety problems. I got to know him not just as a police officer, but as a neighbor. And he got to know me and my neighbors and other people in the community, not just as, you know, responding to calls, but as his neighbors. And I think that's like the basic value of the residency requirement is is that the people who work for the city, especially, you know, the people who protect us, know us as people, and we know them as people. So I just urge you to not vote this out of, not pass any kind of legislation that would eliminate the residency requirement tonight. And if you do need to adjust, make any adjustments, take the time to do that. Look at the actual data and see what you need to do to make any changes, but don't support this legislation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. WITN. Is there anyone still on virtually? Okay. All right, thank you. Again, I want to thank everyone who joined us in council chambers and virtually for all of your public comment.
Yes, yes.
Madam.
At this time.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilmember White.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules, continue the debate on the ordinance.
Second.
On substitute ordinance, I'm sorry, Mr. President. Ordinance twenty-two dash oh-three-five.
There hasn't been any debate yet. So we're sure? We're sure?
I'm requesting suspension of the rules.
Suspension of our council rules?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
We're going to... We're going to...
Clarity making continue.
I'd like to offer an amendment to substitute ordinance twenty-two dash oh-three-five. Yes.
Hasn't been introduced yet. We have to wait for it to be introduced.
If we get a motion to suspend the rules, it can be done right now.
One second, I'm just going to confer with our parliamentarian. Can you speak into the mic, parliamentarian?
Yes.
Yes. Can you repeat that question into the mic, please, parliamentarian?
I'm sorry, the question was whether or not the councilperson wished to suspend the rules in order to consider the revision one to zero-two-one-six, the general item. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Not a rule I was anticipating, looking at this evening. Give me a moment or two.
You got it.
Thank you.
We ain't going nowhere.
But if he's not going to sponsor, not before we go back, he's just...
What is...
I want to know why that's...
Yeah, but so that's why I'm saying, we're not moving it as... But to move in specific...
All right, thank you for your patience, colleagues and public. I ask everyone to please return to your seats. Everyone, please return to your seats. Council members, please return to your seats. Thank you. So there's been a motion, all right, Councilmember White, to suspend the rules. It was second. So we're going to do a roll call vote to vote on if we are going to suspend the rules.
Point of, I have a question.
Yes.
Are we, is it on a question? Can we talk about it before we vote on it, or no?
Can we talk about...
Can we talk about the motion he's making for the reconsideration so that we're able to explain to the community why we're doing that? Because I want them to know why we're doing it.
Yes, Councilmember White, you want to explain why we are trying to suspend the rules.
Mr. President, the community has come out tonight, and they've been very voiceful in their objection to any relaxation or abolishment of the residency. They've spent almost four hours explaining to council why they do not want this residency to be abolished. They don't know that the rules of council could allow this matter to die
Yep.
without full consideration of the council, thereby nulling all of these comments that were made tonight. I'm not of the opinion that this is what council should do. Someone mentioned earlier, there's been clear lines of authority. No one should be taking that authority away from council, including individual members who may have some other thoughts. This will allow council to give consideration to what I believe may be a resolution to this issue, and that we can get it done tonight as opposed to a month from now.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember White. So, please call the rule.
Council President.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Miss Fadola.
I'm still confused. Is Councilmember White asking to skip the agenda to this? I'm still confused what exactly...
Suspension of the rules will allow us to go from this agenda to consideration of ordinance twenty-two dash oh-three-five.
So we're skipping the agenda?
Councilmember Fields.
Yes, my question is, do we take a vote on the suspension of the rules? We have to take a vote on just him asking for the suspension?
Yes.
Right?
Correct.
Okay, so, okay.
Okay.
If, okay, so... So to be clear, instead of going in order by district as we normally do, we're going to put this legislation first. Is that what I'm understanding?
Councilmember White.
Ma'am, Mr. Chair and President, once you suspend the rules, yes, short answer is yes. That motion can come correct, come to the top of it, and any other considerations that we want to make, aside from the agenda, would be allowed. That would be the suspension of the rules we allow.
Okay.
Again, it's an effort to debate this matter that the public has clearly indicated they want a resolution to tonight.
All right, and I think what is going on is that just for a little bit more clarity, as the president, I do have the ability to change around the agenda, but I think it's a concern of some council members and some members in the public that the ordinance regarding residency may be held. And in that case, we wouldn't be able to discuss it, we wouldn't be able to debate it, we wouldn't be able to vote on it. So Councilmember White, if I'm correct, that's what we want to avoid it being held possibly so that we can...
That's correct, Mr. President. You nailed it. You know the games we play.
Yes. And one second, please, I just want to confer with the parliamentarian.
I can explain it in lay terms. We just want to vote. That's it. We just want to vote. He's trying to take it away.
And after confirming with the parliamentarian, we are going to need nine votes for this to move forward, for the suspension of the rules to move forward. Councilmember Fadola.
Yes, I just want to put it into lay terms for people to understand. The sponsor...
The sponsor of this bill wants to hold it, meaning if he holds that bill tonight, you would not be able to hear tonight the people vote on the legislation. He wants to hold it, so then it takes a whole nother month for us to come to a resolution and then we're going to try to help to get you guys back out. That is unacceptable. He is trying to avoid voting tonight. They are trying to avoid it. They were not going to give him that opportunity. He is not going to hold that legislation. He's going to vote for it tonight. And we need nine people, so y'all going to see the nine people who vote yes for us to vote on this tonight or not? Y'all about to see, we're about to do the vote.
Thank you. Any other council members? Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields.
No.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Please be frank. You make a figure.
Councilwoman McCoy.
This is for suspending the rules.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Field. Councilwoman Cabrera.
No.
Councilman Mills.
No.
Councilman Spadola.
No.
Councilwoman Bracy.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Eight yeas and five nays.
So at this time, we will.
It's eight yeas, five nays.
Needs nine. Needs nine. Yes, we need nine. Okay. All right, so the suspension of the rules has been.
Excuse me.
Councilmember Oliver.
I thought that day when we went over, it said the majority of members present that was changed in the rules. Wherever, stay with me. We went over that today, remember? It's not two thirds anymore. We changed the rules, it's the majority of members present. We went over that today.
But it's still not.
Excuse me. On the floor, I was with the president today with Jim Baker for an hour. The rules was changed and it's the majority of members present. It wasn't, two thirds is not in there anymore. We read it today.
Councilmember, I mean, parliamentarian, may I respond?
The rules are changed. Don't do that.
So the, the motion was to suspend the rules. Per Rule twenty-two of City Council Rules, except as limited by Rule twenty-three, rules may be suspended by approval of a majority of the members of council in attendance.
Yes.
No, except as limited by Rule twenty-three. Rule twenty-three, the third part thereof, it does say no rule may be suspended or amended in derogation of an existing right or privilege of any member except by a two-thirds vote of all members of council. Because the, because the rule to suspend would strip the council member of his ability to hold, of his privilege to hold that legislation. That's why it required two-thirds.
Thank you, I was waiting for you to say that. But the person who has the final say is the president. He is, he, he isn't, he's in charge of this chambers. You just give an opinion, the council president can say he overrules it, right of him. Yeah, we ain't got to answer that because I already know Jim Baker said the president controls the room. Trippy, you can say you overrule it. We talked about it today. It's in the rules, it's in the charter. You are in charge of this chambers.
All right, look, give us a few moments, please.
You're in charge of it. That's. You had the last say.
Councilmembers, please, let's, give us a few moments, thank you.
Trippy, you run the chambers.
Run it. This is wild.
Marsha, you know he runs the chambers.
It was eight of us. Since the thirteen of us, it has to be nine. But he's counted as president even virtually. Yeah, he's counted as the councilperson like he's really here.
Yeah, right, 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 right.
So then nine of us. But they don't want to vote all of a sudden now because they don't want to be held accountable. Now they go with them. I was so bold about it.
Right.
Now we're going to have to pack the house a whole nother night, double the room. We're going to get busted next time, y'all.
All right, so after confirming with the parliamentarian, unfortunately, I do not have that kind of, that kind of rule. We do have, we do have council rules that have been set in place, so we did need a two-thirds majority and we didn't get it unfortunately.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So at this time, we're going to, we're going to move to, one second, we're going to move to legislative business and I am going to allow Councilmember Mills to present his legislation first. Councilmember Mills.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate the time, appreciate the comments of our community and at this time, I do wish to held, hold the letter safe. Appreciate the time that the community has taken about, but I, I feel like we need more time to dig into this so we as a community can get this right. The debate that we're having needs to be amongst council members. We don't need to be in here debating and arguing with community members. We are here to represent them and we, we as council, we have.
Please, please let him speak, please allow him to speak.
We have the power to get this right. So I hope that we can come together, use our power and our voice to do what's right in the best interest of the community and get back to running the city business and not have a debate. We're not here to debate with the information or misinformation that's going back and forth today. We have time to discuss this and maybe we have more, maybe we need more time to discuss this and go back and put this back into the committee meetings so we can discuss it further and get this right for the community. So at this time, I am asking for it to be held. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. So we're going to, at this time, we're going to turn to the regular order of legislative business. Councilmember.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilmember White.
Point of order, clarification.
Yes.
Did, did I hear the sponsor say he's going to refer this to committee?
Yes.
Yes.
That's dead.
Councilmember.
We're about to hold it so it can be discussed further, Mr. President. Yes.
Ow, ow, though. I'll just write a new law later. I'm not following.
Okay. So by council, hold on one second.
It's already been voted out of committee, though. Can it be back? It's already been voted out and it's. That's Trippy's legislation. I have to start more. So it is dead, I think it is dead. Our Mills not going to. That is his legislation. I know, but our Mills passed the provision of his legislation for me to do a floor amendment. So since he did, but why didn't you just do the floor amendment?
So, excuse me, I have a point of order. Mr. President.
Explain.
Have a point of order.
Okay, so just after confirming with the parliamentarian, Councilmember Mills does not have to refer it to a committee, he can, he can hold it. He could, he can refer it, but doesn't have to.
I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Oliver.
If this is, this is the second time it's been held, isn't this dead? Isn't this dead? Excuse me, this is the second time. And this is, because I'm, it's dead.
So, you're, you're correct, Councilwoman Oliver, I think.
Hold on, let him finish speaking.
No, y'all just told me mine was dead.
This is, this is the second time that it's been held, according to Rule nine of the City, uh, rule, council rules. An ordinance that has appeared on an agenda for third and final reading at two meetings of council without its sponsor moving for consideration shall not therefore be placed on an agenda for consideration at another meeting, except by a majority vote of members present at a meeting preceding the meeting for which agenda listing is sought. So the councilperson would have to bring it back, but bring it back and say, I would like to have this held at the December, November, December, whatever meeting, if you're going to specify, a majority of members will have to accept that.
So right now is dead. That's all I want to hear.
So.
I know what you're saying.
The majority of the members of that meeting have to agree.
Agree to come back.
Allow it to be held at the next meeting and then just every other ordinance would still require a majority vote of all members of.
Right, but right now is dead. I mean, it's not dead, but I know.
It's not dead, no. I don't want to give any misinformation to the, to the community. So right now, right now, it's technically not dead, but we'll have to go as a council to put it back on the, put it back on the agenda.
I have a question.
Councilmember McCoy.
Yes, thank you. My question is, I do realize that this is the same ordinance, but it's actually two different sponsors. His name has been switched out from the very first sponsor. Is it still considered the same thing?
So, that was a question that we, we looked at. The substance of the, the legislation as it was presented by the councilmen, the substance was the same. I understood the previous council member did not want to present it to the council. So another councilperson did, he.
It's the same.
But substantively, the, it was as it was passed out of committee. So it was the same as it was, you know, for the, I believe it was July, that was the first time it was held. So substantively, the ordinance is the same as it was back then.
You did. Thank you for the clarity.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you.
Madam, Madam, Mr. President. Mr. Parliamentarian. Was there clear written communication that the original sponsor no longer wanted to sponsor this bill? Because otherwise, it's hearsay.
No, I'm, I'm not going to allow. I didn't put it in writing, but I did say I did not want to sponsor it.
That's all I wanted to hear.
Okay, thank you.
Then.
Okay.
I have a, I have a question, Council President, for.
There is no debate around this ordinance anymore because it was held, so we, we can't have debate of it.
Just in terms of the legal effect, so right now, it's, it's established by the administration that residency is not exist. So until we pass something, no residency is.
Point of order, point of order. The administration cannot deny or not enforce a legally passed ordinance, no matter what they say. Section three dash three oh four is on the menu code.
Unfortunately, we can't have debate.
Okay.
It was held, so we can't have any more debate from any councilmembers. Councilmember Darby, let me explain to her, please. Let me explain, please. If you can, if you can let me explain.
Point of order.
Let, please, I'll, I'll explain it to, to my colleagues and to.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Thank you. So right now, according to the administration's opinion, there is no residency. Some of us on council wanted to put something into effect this evening, but we weren't able to do that. So according to their opinion, there is no residency.
It is, it still is. It is. It still stands the same.
Mr. President, I'm just commenting on your comments. What is section three dash three oh four, menu code or section four dash B subsection of three dash three oh four on the books? Right now, for, 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 the administration has an opinion, which I've already commented, that's an opinion. How can they, or how can we, how do we even comment that we don't have a residency?
And I.
Now, you could say it's not being enforced.
All right.
But we have a residency.
According to, yes, according to me, I think we do. But the administration has, has chosen not to, not to enforce it. But we cannot, but we cannot, we cannot discuss this any further. I apologize. It's, it's been held and legally, we cannot discuss it any further. Yeah. So we're going to go to Councilmember Oliver.
Yes.